All right. At this time, please silence your cell phones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the city council during this meeting, please complete a request to speak for them. They can be found out here in the lobby at the front entrance. And then you will present it to the city clerk, right here down up front. Speakers physically present will be called upon the appropriate time, and each person is allowed three minutes of speaking time. All right. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. It is 6:00 PM. Invitation will be given by Pastor Jonathan Tilt from Centerpoint Church. Yes, sir. Sir, if we can have you come to the podium here. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here today. Let us pray. Thank you, God, for this day. Thank you for everyone who is here. I pray, God, for wisdom, for all the decisions that need to be made today, for issues that need to be talked about in the city. God, I pray for kindness as we may talk about certain things, disagree with certain things, and help us to make good decisions for the citizens of the city. And I pray, God, that you will be with us. Your wisdom will be upon us. And we pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Please remain standing, and we would like to have Doug Wilson lead us in the pledge, please.
(Inaudible)
Thank you, sir. My name is Michelle Sabino. I am the mayor pro tem, and I promised the mayor a mom joke. Therefore, in honor of Women's, International Women's Day, I've been allowed one time only to leave this meeting. So, welcome, everyone. All right. So, we will go ahead and open with roll call. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sabino?
Here.
Mayor Hussey is absent. Mayor Pro Tem, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay. Public comment. This is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda.
Pardon me, may I presume?
Yes, sorry.
We are on Section A.
We're reordering real quick.
I apologize.
No worries.
Thank you.
So, we will be pulling item number 12, item number 13, and then anybody that was here for closed session items, we will not be having any closed session items this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excuse me. What items?
12 and 13.
Thank you.
Any other items?
Excuse me?
Any other items?
That is it for me.
Okay. All right. Um, okay. All right. Public comment. This is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. We may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment or may request a matter be agendized for a future meeting. Is there any public comment?
Paulina Ortega?
Ms. Ortega, please approach the podium, please. Go ahead. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Paulina Ortega. And I'm going to read it because if I just say myself, I'll talk, talk, talk. Dear City Council, my name is Paulina Ortega. I'm here to express my concern regarding the recent home invasion that happened houses down my house. This incident has left me and many residents, including myself, feeling anxious and nervous about our safety of our community. If this were to happen to me, my family, we probably would have been victims. I don't own a gun, and I live in a one-acre house, and I know that nobody would have hurt me. I believe it is critical that we take immediate action to address this concern. This opened my eyes that we should be more prepared. I respectfully request more funding to be allocated to increase more patrolling in our area. This increased presence will help deter criminals activity and provide residents with a greater sense of safety. Furthermore, I propose to establish on our neighborhood, a neighborhood program, a neighborhood watch program in Grand Terrace. A well-organized neighborhood watch will foster a sense of unity and share responsibility among residents while working with the law enforcement to prevent crime and suspicious activity. Our community deserves to feel safe and protected. I believe these steps will make a significant difference. Thank you.
Thank you. I know you and I have had conversations before, and so I'm happy to meet with you also after the meeting today.
Likewise.
Thank you.
No more public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to item C, special presentations. Aria Wilson with Girl Scouts with the San Gregorio Girl Scout Council.
Hello. My name is Aria, and this is Alexis, and we are here to talk about donating a library and food bank, in a way, just to help the community, especially because of the fires that have been happening and all of the power outages. Lots of people have lost all of the food in their fridge and have not had much to do. And I feel that reading is a huge part of a child's childhood, and everyone should have the opportunity to pick up a book and read it, along with food. Food is very important, and I feel everyone should have immediate access to it because it's, everyone needs food, and everyone needs good, healthy food. So, that's what I would like to do, and yeah.
Does the council have any?
So, it would be called, oh, awesome, cool. It would be called Lunch and Literacy, and it's a little free pantry and a book exchange, and you would take what you need and give what you can. Items would be non-perishable, such as canned goods, boxed goods, bagged goods, and all in sealed condition. Um, why? Because of all the power outages and food insecurity is becoming increasingly popular because of increasing prices and everything. Yeah. Where? I think that the park would be a great location because it's extremely accessible, easy to find, and everyone goes to the park. Any questions? Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the council have any? Councilman Allen?
Thank you very much for that presentation, and I'm glad you had included some pictures there and stuff. It was, that's very unique, and it looks really encouraging to see something like that. So, are you looking for funding? Are you looking for support of some kind? Do you want books or?
No, I'm just looking for approval to build it in the park. And yeah, just your support in building it.
Oh, okay. I see.
Yes.
Okay. And, okay, and you're, you like Rollins Park?
Yes.
Okay. Did you look at other parks and locations? Do you have like an alternate choice?
I did. There are other places, just like the flag donation. It could be put next to the flag donation or around it. Other places, it doesn't have to be in the park. It's just a very open area where there's lots of neighborhoods around.
Yeah. I was thinking about our fitness park we have on the other side of town, you know. So, but Rollins Park, too, yeah, okay. Well, thank you very much again for that. I appreciate it, and, you know, I'll pass it on.
Councilman Wilson?
Thank you. Terrific idea. Let me first say that, and then second, you got the right last name because my last name's the same, Wilson. So, I think it's terrific what you gals are talking about, and may I steer you to the staff? Because it usually takes an application to do anything in the world, no matter what it is. So, you always got to get the paperwork taken care of. And then so far as construction and those kinds of things, I think that's important to run through the staff with that so they can help you determine a location that might be best suited for your situation. I don't know if you guys are behind the book repositories that are at a couple of parks, but if you aren't, this is, this is, goes right along with these, this concept, and I think it's terrific. I'm an avid reader, so I really believe in it, and I agree with your point that food is a scarce item, just like water. So, anyway, if you will either see the city manager, or he can direct you to the staff folks that are at the counter, they can get you started on the whole thing, all right, and get you some traction. All right? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great rest of your day.
Pardon?
Sorry.
I just want to make sure. Conrad, can you raise your hand there? So, he will help you out. He will get you moving. Thank you so much for the presentation. Absolutely love it. I know around the city, we have probably two or three of the book donation spots, and so Conrad can assist you as well as maybe just kind of checking to make sure it's in a space where we don't have it already. But I love the idea. I'm a speech therapist, and so, you know, reading is my love language. Being able to foster imagination, that happens through books. So, I love that. In addition, you're right, we've had so many outages. We have people going without, we have some local churches also who have food pantries on certain days, and so they might be people also to link up with, and between the council here and myself, we can connect you to those resources. But definitely, I love this idea. In San Regino County alone, we have 40% who are living 200% below the poverty line, and of that 40%, 50% have food insecurity. Add to that the number of outages that we've had and those who have not been able to access generators, who don't have the financial abilities, and things of that sort. I think this is perfect timing, so thank you both of you ladies for coming out today and sharing that with us.
Thank you so much for listening and your time.
Thank you. Daisy, do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Item D, consent calendar. The following consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Item 10. And then city attorney, did you have?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. For item six, I will go ahead and read the title of the ordinance prior to the vote. So, that is ordinance number 365, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, Amending Section 6.08.010, Dog License Required, of Title VI Animals of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, which amends the city's animal licensing and vaccination regulations. Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to move the remaining items on the consent calendar?
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, sir.
On item number three, the February check register, I'm accusing myself from voting on check number 82180, which is a hotel reimbursement for the mayor and council members' academy that I received.
Okay.
And I would like to move the balance of the consent calendar.
We will be moving one through nine and 11. 11 through, no, 12 was removed.
12?
Right, 12 was removed.
Correct.
At the beginning. So, one through nine and 11.
Second.
Thank you. All right. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Okay. Regarding item 10, this is amendment number three to the Traffic Signal Maintenance Agreement with St. Francis Electric. Okay? The reason I actually pulled this is I just want to go over it quickly, and then I'll tell you why. The background, city, we approved a three-year contract for traffic signal maintenance and on-call service with two extensions. Originally, it was set for $20,000 annually, and if you read through there, you'll see that it's had to be, it's been increased to $22,000 annually with a total cost of 95. And then they're also, we're asking now for a little bit extra to plus it up to the next expiration date. And so, you know, we're talking about annual contract amount recently increased, and we have a new four-year contract sum of $141,000. The only reason I wanted to bring this to your attention is because there's going to, there was a traffic study done, and there's some discussion about installing some more traffic signals in the city. And I just want you to understand that, and I'm sure we do, but I just really want us to seriously consider the cost involved in traffic signals, the ongoing cost, not just the quarter of a million it costs to install them, but the ongoing cost to maintain them annually. And I just want us to really, really consider, are these traffic signals where they're being considered at truly the answer to the problem? Because this is a lot of money. With all that said, I make a, I make a motion to pass item 10.
Is there any other discussion? Yes, sir. Councilman?
I might also add to that. In order to be able to, to change any of the traffic lighting system, as well as any of the stops, or any of the rest of it, a traffic engineer actually has to provide what they call a warrant, and it has to be processed through Public Works. And so, if a particular change, just like if you wanted to upgrade Barton Road to 70 miles an hour, which is about as, about as fast as they drive there, Mr. Sheriff, anyway, you would still have to go through this warrant process. And the warrant then studies that from a traffic circulation standpoint, and then says, yes, the recommendation will work, or, you know, city, you can do what you want, but your best bet is to have this. So, it's not as easy as just dumping a street light there, or, you know, dumping a traffic light, or putting what they call traffic influences, you know, like bumps, speed bumps and stuff. You can't just wham them on there. This isn't Mayberry. You know, this is a thing that you have to do through a Public Works program, and it has to be authorized in advance, that it's actually good for health and safety of the community. So, that's one other thing, too.
And so, just so, I'm understanding correctly, you're concerned with the amount, however, you're okay with?
Well, I'm, the item, I'm okay with the item. Of course, we have to maintain the ones that we have, and that's what this is for, is to continue maintenance on those. I just wanted to bring it to your attention to really look at the actual, when you think about the future, you know, we had the traffic study done, and the recommendations were made. And so, what he was talking about, that's the next step. And so, I just want us to, I just really want us to understand those costs, and if they're, if that's really the best use of the residence dollars to solve the problem that we're trying to solve. But yes, I'll, I make a motion on item 10.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes. Thank you.
And then item 12.
No 12, and no 13.
All right. Item E, public hearing. I would like to invite Ms. Shanita Tillman forward for public hearing to Form Community Facilities District 2025 and One.
We're going to skip that one.
Sorry.
And go, and go to new business with the tree plant.
I apologize.
It's all right. We get for mixing it up on you.
All right. Item G, new business. Also, Shanita.
Yes. Good evening, council. Shanita Tillman, Senior Management Analyst. I'm excited to introduce a new initiative, Grand Terrace Grows, a citywide tree planting initiative. This project is all about enhancing our community's green spaces and creating a healthier, more beautiful Grand Terrace for all our residents. Our goal is ambitious and exciting. We aim to plant over 200 trees throughout the city. We're initially focusing on residential areas where parkway trees do not exist or have not been replaced. As part of this initiative, we will host an Earth Day Tree Planting Event held Saturday, April 26 of this year, that brings together residents, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and community volunteers. This event will be coordinated by Public Works with a partnership with BRTech to provide a mulch giveaway. And to ensure that we stay on schedule, any trees not planted by March, excuse me, May 31st will be planted by West Coast Arborist, and any interested residents must sign a simple agreement choosing their preferred species and committing to maintain the tree. Also, code enforcement recently had a landscape effort where homeowners lacking landscaping were educated on the importance of upkeeping your landscape, and we are excited and would love to partner with those homeowners who do not have a parkway tree. That's the information. Now, about the numbers. We have allocated $75,000 for Grand Terrace Grows Initiative. These figures listed in your report are estimates, and we will adjust the number of trees purchased and other associated costs to ensure that we remain in that budget. All funds are set to be expended by June 30th, 2025, and this is an investment, and it's not just about spending. Our goal is that in 20 years, Grand Terrace is known for its thriving tree canopy and blossoming parkway. Lastly, staff is recommending approving the Grand Terrace Grows Initiative and authorize staff to move forward with tree purchases, community outreach, and planning the Earth Day Tree Planting Event as detailed in your report. We also ask for authorization to exceed the city manager's spending authority of $25,000 for tree purchases, allowing us to generate purchase orders for expenses up to $75,000. Your support in this initiative is crucial to helping us create a positive impact within our community and increase our quality of life. And I'm open for any questions.
So, before you want to start, I do want to add that, you know, trees, trees are an important part of the urban landscape. They help clean the greenhouse gases, they help clear air pollution, they increase property values, and there's studies out right now that actually, the more trees you have in a community, the lower the crime rate is, too. So, I don't know how that works, but there's, there's, there's a connection with that. It probably just looks nicer, it's cleaner, and it's not someplace where people want to go cause problems. But there is, this is an investment in the future, and it's one of those things, you know, you always say the best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago, the second best time is today. And Grand Terrace is a community that is bereft of a canopy, and it would really add to the beauty and enhance the community and the property values. So, thank you.
Okay. It's council. Councilman Allen?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. You know, on packet page 186, the last, is the chart that shows the individual cost of these trees, and it shows the, the trees planted by West Coast Arborist at $115 per Are these mature trees? Are they, are they special trees at $115 apiece?
That's just, that's the cost of them putting in the tree, and their services for putting in the tree. Because they are business, they do have their own individual costs. Our goal is that our own maintenance department would spearhead the predominant portion of our tree planting, planting as much as they can before May 31st.
Does West Coast Arborist guarantee, I mean, do, if a tree dies within a year or two, are they going to, do we have that written in there that they're going to?
Not currently.
Not currently? Because, I mean, you know, you can go to Lowe's or Home Depot, and you got a one-year guarantee.
We might need to look at.
But then, again, you don't have somebody putting it in the, holding, digging a hole in the ground, putting it in the ground. Yeah, I was, that's what I was, that's what my question is about, is the actual individual cost of the trees and why they are that, you know, if they're.
Well, we, oh, go ahead.
There's two pieces. One is, and hopefully, the vast majority of the trees will be planted by our staff and volunteers, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. The idea is we'll dig the holes in advance, they can plant the trees, fill in the dirt, and we'll get that laid in as much as we can. And then whatever's left over that we can't do, then those, the droppings, West Coast will have to do. And that cost really is their labor cost to do, to do that work, not the tree, the tree cost.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I must say that I think it's a great initiative. Everything you've said about trees, I agree with, and I just really look forward to us, you know, covering, doing this. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Can I suggest that we, as some part of this purchase order authorization, that we include some kind of language that says that the city's representative will choose the trees at the source? Because that gives you the opportunity then to tag those trees, and that answers City Councilman Allen's question of whether they're mature, whether they're healthy, you know, all the rest, if they're bedded properly and all the rest of that. If you can go there and tag them right at the source, and those tags are identifiable from there, you pretty well got it taken care of.
Well, we have reduced the choices of trees down to three trees that residents can choose from, and these are based on trees that fit within the parkways so that we are not having damage to our infrastructure, our streets, or our sidewalks. And these are set to be sourced from local nurseries. It's just those trees from West Coast Arborist might be at a different cost.
Well, unless somebody that knows what they're doing goes over there and tags those trees before they get. To answer your question, yes, somebody will select the trees. It's like, it's like buying two-by-fours from Home Depot. Pick your own, don't have to deliver them, right? So, yeah. Yeah, they can be crooked, that's for sure. Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you for the presentation. I, I just wanted to say, you know, this is long overdue. It's a, it's a fantastic step towards a, you know, a more beautiful, beautiful Grand Terrace, you know, improving our environment, and I would like to commend staff for finding the savings in the current budget without spending any additional resources also to pay for this program. So, you know, hats off to all of you for making this happen. Thank you for your work on this project.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation and for all the work that you've put into it. I'm just curious, is there research that shows if you have more trees, there's less crime? Is it because there's nowhere to tag or graffiti?
Yes, there is, there is research that, yes, there is less crime if you have more trees.
Okay. We should put that on just the facts. And so, anyone who's not aware, we do have on our website now a location where you can find just. find Just the Facts. I know a lot of the time we get our information from nine-two-three-one-three or nine-two-three-one-three community. And so if you ever have questions or you want to know the root of that, please go to Just the Facts. And so hopefully we can get our public safety and sheriffs to give us, and our city manager to give us that research that shows us that our crime will go down. All right, well, thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Is, what are we, what's the motion for to approve? I move staff recommendations.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Item H, future agenda items. At this time, city council may propose items for discussion and/or action at a future duly-agendized city council meeting. A consensus of a majority of the quorum is required to place an item on a future agenda. Do we have any items from the court, from the dais? All right. Seeing that there are none, we will move to item I, city council communications. Councilmember Brown?
Well, good evening again. It's been an eventful few weeks. I had the pleasure of attending the Santa Ana River Enhanced Recharge Phase ribbon cutting along with Councilmember Wilson. And while it probably doesn't sound like an exciting project, it's a very exciting, meaningful project to creating sustainability in our water supply for the region. And I would look to Councilmember Wilson, he's an expert in water issues. But it was, it was a fantastic event I got to attend. Additionally, I wanted, again, commend staff for their work on the Blue Mountain Hike. That was another fantastic event that we just recently put on. I look forward to that every year. And as Mayor Protem had already said, the Just the Facts addition to our city website, I wanted to thank staff for their work in updating that and putting a lot of excellent information out there for our community so they can go to a place where you have verifiable information that you can use, that's actionable, and it's not rumors from social media. And so thank you for, Conrad, for quickly making that happen over the last few weeks. And then just, just recently, I also attended the tomorrow's Leaders Foundation Board Meeting, and it's a fundraising foundation for the Colton Unified School District. They're raising scholarship monies for our students here, funding mentorship programs, and providing trade resources. And so it's been a busy few weeks. There's been, last thing I'd like to mention is there's a lot of concern in our community about crime, and I was disappointed to see, along with the recent events we've had here, but the California Legislature seems to be really tone deaf on the crime issues. You know, we had Prop thirty-six that passed in November with an overwhelming majority, nearly seventy percent of California voters approved that measure that addresses homelessness, retail theft, and really gets people treatment for addictions and gets these habitual criminals off of our streets. I did hear a presentation last week from County District Attorney Jason Anderson, and they've already got five hundred people in the program who've been, who've been prosecuted and are actually going through the process of diversion and substance abuse treatment. And those are the things that are really going to be effective in getting people off the streets and cleaning up a lot of the crime that we're seeing. The reason I mentioned Prop thirty-six is because the part that disappoints me, that frustrates me, and, and since the mayor's not here, I'm going to go on just a little bit about it, is that there was an assembly bill that was introduced. It's AB thirteen thirty-three. And it essentially makes self-defense a crime. It's in our own homes. It requires us to basically justify defending ourselves. And it's a step in the wrong direction from Prop thirty-six that was just passed. It's, it's frustrating that the people in Sacramento don't seem to understand what we face in our communities on a daily basis. We shouldn't have to justify using force to protect ourselves in our homes or in the community, but unfortunately, some folks in the Assembly have introduced this bill, AB thirteen thirty-three, and it will be making its rounds with the Assembly Public Safety Committee, but it really inhibits our ability to protect ourselves and our families. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. So if you feel like picking up the phone and making a phone call or writing a letter or email, I encourage you to do so. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Councilman Allen?
Thanks, Mayor Protem. On February twelfth and thirteenth, both those two days, there were Cal Cities webinars I attended, but the one I wanted to tell you about is, on the thirteenth, I attended, I attended the Cal Cities webinar for the Veterans Caucus. And there isn't one at the moment in Cal Cities, but there is an effort to try to form one. They need fifty cities that are willing to sign on to join the caucus. And I, I'm pretty sure, I mean, I just think it could really benefit us to support that caucus. I mean, I would have attended, I know the mayor's a vet, and so it would be important for both, and I have long pushed for a Veterans Caucus at Cal Cities because there are bills before the state legislature that can benefit veterans and their families that desperately need the support of the caucus, of the Cal Cities. So, you know, I, I mean, I can't tell Cal Cities on my own that we support, that we will, will be a member, but I did, because I listened to it and I responded to the host for more information, and as soon as we get it or whatever, I'd like to bring it back to the council and make sure, see if we can, whatever it is we have to do to, to become a supporter of that caucus and a member of that caucus. So, and that was on the third, on the nineteenth, the, the community cabinet for the school district, we held that. And, and on the twenty-sixth was the JPI board meeting. It was on Zoom, and it was all consent calendar. On the twenty-seventh, here, we had the first town hall meeting for our new Assembly Member Castillo, right over here in our community room, back on the twenty-seventh, that evening, I attended that. That was an interesting meeting, and I'm glad that, that she's doing that here in our community. And I encourage everyone, if you want to touch base and get in touch with your Assembly member, and, and I know her field agent's sitting right up there in the, in the chairs right behind you there, Yawn, but Tony's here, but come to those town hall meetings that she has. On March one, I earned my Blue Mountain Hike Medal. Thank you very much. And it was a great day. It was perfect weather, and you should have been there, Adrian. You should have been there. It was, but it was, I, I am so thankful for everyone that came out and supported it, the staff and all the residents and people that came and hiked up the mountain. And thanks to the property owners of that mountain that opened it up for us. And thank you so much for your gracious hospitality. So on the, on March fifth, I attended the San Bernardino County Office of Home Services Regional Steering Committee meeting, of which I sit on that board as the, and Matt's the alternate, the new alternate for that. And that was on March fifth. And the, March the eighth, I attended the Colton Grand Terrace American Cancer Society Relay for Life kickoff meeting. And that was held at the Colton American Legion Hall. And hopefully in the future, there'll be a, we'll be able to host some Relay for Life events in our city, since we partner with Colton to do that. Relay for Life is so important, people, for cancer research and for hopefully someday to find a cure for this terrible disease. So if you want to be a part of that Relay for Life, which will take the actual relay take, will take event, take place, last year was in October. And so this year, I'm not quite sure when it'll be, but this whole summer is going to be the, putting the teams together and planning the relay event. So if you want to be a part of that, then you can see me, or you can go online to the American Cancer Society's Colton Grand Terrace Relay for Life. And if, I wish Matthew was here. Matthew Hernandez, if you're listening, thank you so much for your leadership. He's the chair of it, and I would like to see him come back. He's also on our Chamber of Commerce, which meets tomorrow morning, by the way, and so he will be there. This morning, I attended the San Bernardino Business Watch Roundtable, and the featured presenter was the Eric Ustation, who is the PAO for the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians. And we learned a lot about all the ways that the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians is involved in impacting our, our community in so many ways that you, that are obvious to you and maybe you don't know about. We actually have a healthcare clinic here in our city that is supported by them. And so here, and they have, you know, medical facilities all over the area. They support Lomond Hospital, and then they have, of course, their casino. And here's a real fun fact I learned, you can, that I would have never guessed this, but Yamava Resort and Casino is the second most visited attraction in Southern California. And of course, you can guess what the first one is, it's Disneyland. But between fifteen and twenty million people visit Yamava in twenty twenty-four. I mean, the Dodgers can't even bring in four and a half million in a year, right? So yeah, that, that, that casino and that really does something for the area. We also had a presentation from the San Bernardino Police Department, and the lieutenant, who is over the entire section of downtown San Bernardino, all the way to our city limits here in Redlands and all that area, was the presenter. And one of the interesting things, he was giving us crime statistics. Major crimes across the board, down. Petty crimes, shoplifting, you know, and all that stuff. So it's, you know, for, encouraging on one aspect, you know, you don't have to fear for your life so much if you go down to San Bernardino, but on the other hand, you might want to, you know, not take any money or watches on your hands or anything. So, you know, mostly shoplifting and things like that is what he was talking about, smash and grabs, and petty, petty thefts and things, and assaults. But murders, rapes, and armed robbers and things on the, have been trending down for years. And he said, you know, he said, what can I say? It's following a state pattern. But that was this morning, and last but not least, I will leave you with, I get, I'm sure you're going to talk about it, I don't know, because I told you about it, but I also learned from him that there's a rave, nocturnal wonderland is the end of this month, March twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. Get your earplugs out and, okay? Eighty thousand people each day coming into San Bernardino to listen to that, and we'll be hearing it all right up here. Sorry.
We get to listen to it for free?
So that's, that's the one thing I did learn today. So, but that's all I got. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I think we're going to need two council meetings, one for the communications and one for the actual meeting. All right. Councilman Wilson?
We only have one council meeting a month, just whatever.
Yes, sir.
It was a busy week, actually, a busy couple of weeks. Attended Ann Pettit's funeral, and it was a beautiful service. Got an opportunity to meet many family members. And as you know, Ann Pettit is the person that was responsible for deeding the property on the northeast corner of Barton and Preston for the city's use eventually. If you know anybody that's got a couple of ten million dollars or so, that just wants to kind of put in a really nifty building there, let us know. You know, let's actually, you know, let our financial whiz over here know, because we'll definitely take it in a, in a hot second. Also attended the same day, the Colton Mayor's wife's funeral, and it was a beautiful program in itself. She was well-loved. Did attend the town hall meeting, got an opportunity to be a super gadfly in relation to the affordable housing program that's being foisted on us from the state level. And my, my urging was is to, you know, maybe we better see some, some actual results first before we throw more money at things, because first of all, the money doesn't go in our direction. And if it was to go in our direction, I don't think anybody's even sure. I mean, ten or twelve units in the middle of Los Angeles doesn't help San Bernardino area very well or Grand Terrace in, in, you know, in specifics. So, so we've got to get better at the programs than what we're doing now, because what the state's doing now is a fail. And so we had a chance to communicate that. I believe that our representative, Castillo, is warming up the saddle at this point, and she's learning all about what she's, what she's doing as an assembly member, and I wish her good will. I did get a chance to attend the Recharge Project along with Matt Brown, and it's fascinating. I have it on my phone, and to see that much water going at one time, and the water comes down from the Seven Oaks Dam, and it fills a bunch of ribbons, I guess is the best way to describe them. So they're holding tanks, and those holding tanks then slowly but surely drain down into the aquifer. And it reassures us that we do not have as big of a problem as we could in drought times. And so this is a great project. It goes along with a whole bunch of other improvements that have been happening, and this thing has had a very long fuse on it. So it was neat to see, and it reminds me of the old days when I used to do all that dirt moving and stuff. So Mayor Protem and I didn't bump our cars together as we were going out there, but by George, it was a long trip, about an hour and fifteen, twenty minutes to get out to Palm Desert, where Senator, our Senator, Ochoa Bo, it just so happens that we are on the absolute western edge of her district, but we are a vocal group, and I believe we are going to have a good ton, contact and a lot of help from Senator Ochoa Bo. And then I'd like to applaud the Lewis leveling and repairing and reseating and all that good stuff of, of the dinky field up there on Roland's Park. I think it's terrific. The only drawback is, is that my dog just doesn't understand. You know, I mean, we only get so many parks in town, and, and we've got them tied up for a little while trying to rehabilitate them. So we go over and steal Highgrove's park to get the opportunity to run and run and run and run. And then we met, I got a chance to meet with a property owner who has a parcel, it is a key parcel to this community, and I won't talk about it now because it's way too early in the game, but I'm really glad that they're, you know, that we're getting some communication back and forth. I've already met with the city manager, and, and so he's looking for a little bit of guidance on how to go about things, and we will continue to do that. Also, met with a representative, some executive representatives from J.C. Wallace, and it was in the spirit of great collaboration to make all our worlds better and, and nicer. And I won't go into details in relation to that, but rest assured that the city is paying attention. And we are working hard to make sure that security concerns are addressed and that any kind of integration that's taking place within the community is for the community betterment and that they are conducting their operations for the best benefit for the city as well as their own. And finally, the sheriffs. Thought I might, you know, there you go. Thought I might, you know, there you go. I think, let me just make this statement, and then you can find out for me if you want to call or whatever, what I mean. Let's get ahead of the traffic enforcement, because I know we've been doing all kinds of things about patrolling and all that stuff, and I do know that unfortunately, our tax measure failed. But the contract says that the sheriffs, however they do it, will furnish the facilities and manpower to make sure that we enforce the laws in the city of Grand Terrace. There is no limitation to that. According to your contract, the ones you guys wrote back about 100 years ago, when, you know, when the, you know, that you had to chase the pioneers across the desert, it says that thou shalt, or we shalt, make sure that we take care of law-abiding circumstances. I'm happy when we pull over somebody that is nefarious, that is doing some bad in our city, or I'm happy also that we are preventing people from breaking windows and doors and all those kinds of things. But along with that, traffic speed enforcement is part of the job. And I've hammered about this before, and we've had conversations with various parties, but it just isn't enough. It isn't enough. You know, you've got kids that are running down streets that, and we know that our speed limits are in the right type of direction, but it doesn't matter when nobody reads the signs. And so let's ticket them. I mean, I'm not speaking for the rest of the people behind this dais, but, you know, if I'm going to go 70 miles an hour in an area that should be no more than 40, which I don't even agree with that, that's a bad idea. And, you know, you look over at the, you know, we're spending, let me just say that we are spending a fairly healthy amount of money for traffic enforcement devices, and restriping, and considering things about stop signs, and lighted stop signs that do this and say, hey, stupid, stop, right? But none of that matters if it doesn't get to their pocketbooks. And I know, and nobody likes getting a ticket. Well, then don't drive that fast. Everywhere in this city is a 25 mile an hour speed limit unless it's posted otherwise. That's as simple as that. And so if you're going 50 miles an hour when it's a 25 mile an hour on observation drive, then that's wrong, and I'm going to start painting giant letters or numbers on there because nobody seems to be able to understand the intelligence behind that. And the reason why the city fathers wanted to control speed to begin with is because we've got a little, little tykes, and lots of dogs, and lots of people that like to walk, in particular on observation drive, that aren't being protected. So I need you guys to figure out how you're going to do it, and how to do it better. And although I will say that I really appreciate your service. So that's all I've got. Mayor Pro Tem, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sure with everything that's being set up here tonight, that many of us, a good portion of us have gone on record about public safety and how we are pro law enforcement, and I'll get to that shortly. It's been a month since we've been back here in this room. I too attended Mayor Frank Navarro's wife's services, very loved, very supported by the community. Please continue to keep him and his family in your prayers. I attended OmniTrans meeting as well, I'm the alternate for the mayor, and I was, I was grateful to have been able to attend that meeting in particular, because they recognize bus drivers who had driven a million miles. That's a lot of miles to have driven in their area, and just the dedication and the work, and considering that, you know, the culture and society continues to change, and having toward their facilities, they now have these spaces to make sure that their drivers are protected, and they continue to do the job day in and day out, with things changing in Sacramento as well, trying to figure out in this space how to remain sustainable financially in this, in this climate where they're being pushed to go electrical, and trying to figure out, is it going to be battery operated? Is it going to be hydrogen? And where they have to, where they can put spaces where they can recharge these massive buses to continue getting people to where they need to go, getting them to their families, getting them to jobs, getting children to school. And so that, you know, they're undergoing massive evolving in that space. I too attended the Blue Mountain hike with many of you in here, and that last leg up there, my goodness, I choose not to go up there because I know it's going to hurt, and it hurt. My husband, who's here, he loves going up that thing, and I'm like, please don't go alone, because as soon as we turned around to come back down, I slipped. And the mayor laughed, and he walked away. You know, but it was, it was a great time. I mean, truly, thank you to city staff, thank you to our volunteers, thank you to our public safety who was out there with us. Such a wonderful event, our community members. I look forward to next year. It was fantastic. I too attended the town hall with Assemblywoman Castillo. For those of you who didn't get to attend, she shared a lot of great legislation that she's bringing to the floor, and she really does have her finger on the pulse of what's happening. I mean, Tony, I'm sorry, could you just raise your hand? She is with her office, and she's constantly not only in touch with those of us up here on the dais, but with our community members, and just really understanding what's happening with regard to the power outages, with our infrastructure, with our public safety. And so we truly are blessed right now to have that representation in Sacramento. And as Councilman Wilson said as well, Senator Ochoa Bo is a close friend and an advocate for Grand Terrace. So we, we have people on both sides of the House up in Sacramento, and again, we were able to attend her swearing in as a show of support. We had staff members there as well, and we are looking forward to the work and hopefully being able to move things forward on our behalf, and finally kind of get that attention here in Grand Terrace. I want to talk about the public safety, and I know that a lot of us have talked about it already. And before being appointed and before winning my election and being seated up here on the dais, I sat with Johan, literally, we, it would be as if we had season seats here. And faithfully here every week, talking about our concerns in the city with public safety being the biggest concern. Johan's been advocating for over seven years because of his personal experience of what happened to his daughter, and the perpetrator coming back over and over to his home. And there's no reason to sugarcoat that from the dais. Because we all live here, and we all want to feel safe. My sister, who lives here, she came home, she's a mom of three young boys, and when she came home one day, a man was following her to her door. And she barely got in on time, and then the man began to fight with the deputy, and she had to call in to say, I think he needs backup. And that's a concern. Because when our deputy responds, he's on his own. And I can't wrap my head around why one cent for every dollar was just too darn much for the community. One cent. One cent was too much for your life. One cent was too much for your safety. We had over at Cal Skate, youth who were robbed coming out of the skating rink. Right after that, a home invasion robbery. With a bill in Sacramento right now that says, if someone comes into your home, you will not defend yourself. That through hell or high water, victims do not matter. That we, that this state of California will protect criminals at all costs. So whether, you know, you're from the senior community, whether you're a single mom, whether you're a child, your life does not matter in Sacramento right now. And that is a hard fact. That is a tough pill to swallow. Meanwhile, the criminal over in the hospital and ICU, that bill goes to us to make sure that law enforcement is there, sitting with that person until they are ready to be seen in court. Those are concerns. I was born and raised in the city of San Bernardino. I understand violent crime, having lost a cousin who lost her life to a fairly violent crime, and being the person who found her on Christmas Eve. Like, I understand that, and it's not something that I want to see happen here in Grand Terrace. We all moved here because of the community, and because we saw it as being safe. And we no longer feel safe. I've spoken to Ms. Ortega a number of times. I've had, you know, we've had so many experiences here, you know, AutoZone and their burglary. Just yesterday, I met with Diego over at Vegan Corner, and the owner of Loud Burger was also there. And I said, your concerns have not fallen on deaf ears. Just because we sit up here does not mean that we are quiet. We're having conversations with our sheriff's department. We're letting our deputies know, we're over there, we're advocating for them. I'm constantly on the phone with our assembly member, our senate, and, and others to say, what can we do to try and make this right? How do we fix this? And so, please know that we are doing everything that we can. We are slated to go up to Sacramento, to go up and meet with other legislators, because we understand it's going to take more than two to hear our voices and to, to understand what our needs are. And so to the community members who are out there, who are concerned, who do not feel safe, or who have been victimized, your, your concerns and your voice is being communicated through us. And you have the strongest counsel sitting here before you, who advocate for public safety and this community. And I apologize if maybe that wasn't understood when a measure came to your ballot during voted, voting season, that you thought maybe you could not trust us. But despite what happened, we are still fighting. We will not be silent, and to anyone who needs to reach out to us, you know where to connect with us. We are always available, and that's all I have to say. Thank you. All right.
Okay. City Manager.
Yeah, just, we obviously have rain on the horizon. As a storm starts to come in to our area, it's here now, but the majority of it will be coming in. It's, has a pretty high threshold. We're starting to see one inch an hour potentially, and with, along with thunderstorms. The reason I say that, as we decided to put a pre-position strike team, use our team, Swiftwater team in the county, that is now starting tomorrow at 0800. And along with that, we have our EOC that is stood up and ready to support the city of Grand Terrace when needed. That is all, Conrad.
Lieutenant Fries, did you have any comments tonight?
Yes. First and foremost, I wanted to thank Councilmember Brown and Mayor Pro Tem for bringing up AB 1333. That's, that's come to our attention as well, and, you know, it's a position of the Office of the Sheriff and myself, that that's, it's going to be very tragic if that, if that Assembly bill passes, especially in light of everything that happened this last week with the call for service that we had here in Grand Terrace. That would essentially make the homeowner, the criminal in this, and essentially potentially make them, you know, liable for that, and they could potentially go to jail time in prison for that, which is absolutely absurd. So at all costs, I mean, that needs to get out, that cannot pass, because you are absolutely afforded the right for self-defense outside of your home, inside of your home, whatever it takes at this point. Because criminals will not come to this area if, if there's a fight, you know, they hit soft targets that is not fortified, and they're going to do everything they can to try to come in here and victimize you. So we need to make sure that doesn't happen. I was up on Blue Mountain as well, so thank you. Gary was there. Did not see Adrian up there, but maybe next time. So maybe next year, I guess. Thank you to Paulina for also bringing up the Neighborhood Watch and Johan. That's come up a lot recently, often, and I think it's a great idea. We're going to move forward on that. I'm going to work with them outside of the meeting here, and we're going to establish some kind of a protocol moving forward to get a meeting, time and place where we can get all the community members that want to get involved in that, to meet somewhere, to get everybody's agenda out there, and just figure out our plan moving forward, because I think that's a great idea. And then last, obviously, not having statistics in front of me as far as, you know, I could assure you that the sheriff's department is absolutely dedicated to making sure that this community is, is safe. You know, I want to just remind you, we're working with very limited resources for this particular city. At any given time, we've got one deputy that's out there, and then they're not just responsible for traffic, but they're also related, are responsible for any, you know, criminal investigation, any call for service. And just, just to kind of give you an idea of this last week, I mean, in the course of this past week, there was 309 calls for service for one deputy. You know, 21 reports taken, nine arrests, 26 citations issued, you know, 143 of those were self-initiated calls for service, where it could be a pedestrian check, it could be a traffic, you know, and that's, that's a lot of calls for service for one individual deputy. On top of that, they have to make sure that their reports are being written, they're being submitted to DA, they've got court. And there's a lot of other things that are involved in that, than just that, and I can assure you that they are very, very proactive. The deputies we have working at Central Station right now that are assigned to this, this particular area are very eager to want to go out there and keep this community safe, and I can assure you that. There's also OTS grants, where they take advantage of just, you know, traffic-related incidents, and they're, and they're using that grant money as well to go out there and make sure that's safe. I could provide, you know, statistics in the future and things like that, but, you know, just want to make the public rest assured that that's their, that is their main priority, is making sure that this community is safe. With that, that's all I have. Thank you. Oh, one last thing. Again, thank you, Conrad, for bringing this up at the last city council meeting, is just to make sure that the community, again, you are the eyes and ears of this, of this area. If you see something out there, anything suspicious whatsoever, please, please, please do not hesitate. If it's an emergency, call 911. If it's non-emergency, again, call on that 909-387-8313. That gets you through to dispatch, and please report that so we can get over there and handle that call for service. And that's all I have.
Okay, real quickly, and since you brought up most of these things, I'll touch on them briefly. The Blue Mountain hike was a huge success. Thank you to staff, everybody that went up there. And Adrian, I didn't go up there either, it's okay, buddy. So, but also, you know, thank you to Dr. Sigistad and the property owners that allow us to use that, that section for the hike once a year. On February 11th, the council approved a, a no-fee permit for transfer switchers, generators, anything involved with energy security for homes. We, since February 11th, we have issued 46 permits, primarily for generators and transfer switches, but also for block wall that was blown over during the wind event, for re-roofs, and then solar batteries and generator installed. So wildly, wildly successful, much more than I expected, and that shows a great deal for, you know, the community taking, taking heed and being, being ready and prepared. So it says a great deal about the community and very successful for the council. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Spino touched on Just the Facts. It's on the front page of the website. Go to grandterrace.com, right below the fold, Just the Facts. We're trying to keep information in there that's current, just a real quick press release on, on anything that comes across. We're trying to stay away from that eight-letter F-word, and then we don't have to go get our information from there. And we'll, we'll try and put up the good and the bad, because we know it's not all sunshine and roses, and sometimes bad things happen in town, and our residents need to be aware of those things, too. So we're going to get a couple articles a week up there for, for information. So please go check out that. And then finally, as Councilmember Allen said, on the 28th and 29th, we will be having the rave. Tickets for about 130 bucks, so we're going to get it for free, on the bright side, but also be prepared for it. You know, in one respect, they have dialed that down to a couple of events a year. year. So not rather than that, where we had six or seven at a time. And they are they are working and trying to get that sound down. It really depends a lot on atmospheric conditions on where we're at. And I think that will do it. So thank you very much.
Anything? Okay. All right, council.
Sorry, .gov, not .com. Sorry. Thank you.
Also, if anyone's a business owner, the chamber will be hosting a meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM at Woody's, correct? All right. Council will now adjourn. The next regular city council meeting will be held on March 25, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office. All right. Thank you, everyone. Yes.